Okay. Would someone like to put that into motion form?
I would make the motion to recommend that the Board of Trustees increase the current sewer tap-in fee to $6,000, as well as an increase, the inspection fee, to $150. I have that right here in front of me.
I'll second that.
So, we're not recommending, though we're taking action. Is that fair?
Correct, yes. That's why we made the motion.
Yeah. The motion was to recommend. I just want to be clear that we're actually going to do this.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
That's right.
Which is what I think you intended. I just, for the record, wanted to make sure-
I did use the word "recommend."
We're on the same page that we're actually going to do it.
Yes.
Do it.
All right. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second? Okay. Questions? Comments? All right. We'll do another roll call, though.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
All right. That motion carries as well. That brings us to 13 Large B, New Small D, Resolution 2524. No, excuse me. 2504. MERS 457 Plan from the Superintendent.
Thank you. We had discussed this at the last meeting. This is a resolution that MERS has asked us to adopt. If you would like for me to break these out, the participation agreement has been broken out into item what was to be G. And then the police chief, the addendum to the agreement, was strictly to effectuate the request in his approved contract. So, together, these, implement the plan and implement the contract that you adopted for the police chief and the township's contribution into this plan for his healthcare savings.
And the only cost to us will be the $100 per month?
Correct. For the police chief. Correct.
Questions?
Is that $100 a month per person? Or $100-
$100 a month, just for the police chief during the term of his contract.
Okay.
We do not make contributions for any other employee into a plan like this. It is employee-funded if people put money into it. So, if I chose to put money into it, I could do that, but the township would not make a contribution for me.
So, all of this first part is necessary to do the second part?
Correct.
And you're looking for what kind of action?
For us to- We need to take these items separately for the clerk. So, that's why they were broken out. And the first one would be for you to adopt the retirement program resolution.
I'll make the motion to accept-
Adopt.
-adopt the MERS Uniform 457 Supplement Retirement Program Resolution.
Second? 2504. We have a motion in a second. Discussion questions?
Does this affect anybody else?
It makes the program available to everyone at the township, but only in that contract provision would we put money in for him.
Okay.
All right. Let's take another roll call vote.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That motion carries as well. That brings us to 13 Large B, New E, MERS 457 Plan Participation Agreement. Do you want to just help us understand which piece this is?
Sure. This is the piece that makes this program available to all employees.
Got it.
And I know the selections are a little bit difficult, but where you see a box with a circle in it is where the selections have been made. This is an amendment to the MERS 457 Plan. There's no- I believe there's no probationary period. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's clerk. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you. Bi-weekly contributions and then will be on- I thought it was to be on-
On monthly deposit or payment to MERS.
Thank you.
So, the action is to approve the participation agreement?
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone like to put that in a motion form?
I'll make a motion to adopt the MERS 457 Participation Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion or any questions? All right. How about one more roll call, though?
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. That brings us to Item 13 Large B, New E, MERS 457 Plan Participation Agreement. Do you want to just help us understand which piece this is?
Sure. This is the piece that makes this program available to all employees.
Got it.
And I know the selections are a little bit difficult, but where you see a box with a circle in it is where the selections have been made. This is an amendment to the MERS 457 Plan. There's no- I believe there's no probationary period. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's clerk. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you. Bi-weekly contributions and then will be on- I thought it was to be on-
On monthly deposit or payment to MERS.
Thank you.
So, the action is to approve the participation agreement?
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone like to put that in a motion form?
I'll make a motion to adopt the MERS 457 Participation Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion or any questions? All right. How about one more roll call, though?
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That motion carries as well. That brings us to 13 Large B, New F, MERS 457 Plan Addendum for the Police Chief.
Yes. This is specifically for the police chief to effectuate his contract. You'll see at the bottom of Page 56 of the packet, Page 1 of 1 of that addendum, $100 a month will be placed in the plan for him per his contract.
I'll make the motion to accept the MERS 457 Employee Contribution Addendum for the Police Chief.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions? All right. Hearing that, another roll call vote.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
That motion carries as well. That brings us to the end of unfinished business items for action, which brings us to new business, Item 14 Large A, Items for Introduction Discussion. The first is the Fire Department Application for Homeland Security Grant Program.
Good evening.
Hi.
Can I talk again?
Yes.
It's almost like I was at home. Long time no see. Hope everybody's doing well. It's hard to believe it's been 90 days this weekend, or the 10th will be 90 days since I started. But I'm here tonight. We have the opportunity, in coordination with Clinton County Emergency Management, to apply for the Homeland Security Funding Grant. It's a reimbursement grant. We would be allowed to apply in coordination with Clinton County Emergency Management because they have access to the funds through the federal government, and we can use it for our drone team. Our drone team has been pretty successful and been used quite a bit lately. Actually, about an hour and a half ago, we were requested by the police department. Luckily, they found the individual they were looking for. But for our use, our team has went to, just before St. Patty's Day, when the olive downtown burn, and it seemed like, was on fire. They requested us. We went out there and helped. We've been up to Gracha County a few times to assist, as well as we're working on being a part of the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, being a team that can deploy throughout the state with our resources. So, we're asking for the okay to apply for $8,000 to do some upgrades. We're looking to get new cases that also have monitors so that we can- It's easier to see than trying to look at a cellphone on the controller, as well as a tripod for our controller and monitor, a speaker attachment, as well as possibly a drop kit. If we would need to drop a light preserver or a light bring out to somebody, whether it's in Park Lake or something like that, we'd have those capabilities.
Does that require additional drone purchase? Or is that-
Nope. This is all equipment that we would just be adding on to the current drone we have now.
What drone is it? The exact- Do you know?
It is the Mavic 3, I believe.
The 3?
Yes.
I didn't think that was heavy-duty enough to carry a payload that heavy.
To an extent, yes. We might not be able to carry bigger items, but we can at least carry some items.
Yeah. I'm a drone owner, too, so I keep up on it.
And actually, we now are up to five licensed pilots for the drone. Within the last four months, we've had three people take a test and pass.
That thermal imaging seems to be really in demand.
It is. It's helped immensely.
Yeah.
Last Monday, Ashley Fire in Gracha County, they had a junkyard fire.
I saw that.
That was almost two acres, and they asked for it just so they could see the hot spots. So, it has been very beneficial, not only to us, but to neighboring agencies, both law and fire. We do have an assist on an arrest to the Sheriff's Department, out in Cornfield and Water Eagle Township late last year. They had a subject run from them, and within 30 seconds of putting the drone up in the air, we were able to find the subject and they were taken to custody. So-
That would have been devastating to my high school class.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
You've cited a great deal, it seems, of requests for service from us with their drone. Is that because we're one of the few that have that kind of a capability, or we were available, or what?
Ish.
Ish?
So, in Clinton County, the Sheriff's Department also has a drone program and drone team. They do not have pilots on all shifts, or somebody that can fly it, whereas now that we have five, we're pretty regularly available. And we've let our partners know that we have it and to call us, and we're more than happy to mount help. So, I think that's a big contributing factor.
And we don't charge for that, do we?
We haven't, no.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
What's the due date?
It's open until the funds are-
Oh, okay. It says the 31st is the deadline, huh?
Is it? Oh, yeah. Sorry. May 31st.
So, we can hear the discussion today and take action at the next meeting, or still in good shape. All right. Any other discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we know where we're at with the fire truck grant you applied for last year?
So, on me, unfortunately, it did not get submitted in time, so there will not be any portion of that. I failed to get some signatures that were needed in time, so I fall on that sword. That was all on me.
Well, we have that opportunity the next-
Yes. As long as the federal funding and there are not cuts of levels-
Yeah. I didn't know if it was-
Especially higher than me.
I didn't know if it was ARPA funding, or what?
Nope. There's safer and the assistance to fire grants run yearly, as long as they're approved at the federal level.
I had the same problem with the Consumers Energy Foundation. I missed the deadline, so that's what I'm also doing.
Okay.
Thanks. All right. Unless there's any other questions or comments, we'll move on.
I've submitted two grants already this year, since we're comparing. It's a lot of work, isn't it, Kate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
That brings us to Item 14, New Business Large B Items for Action. Item A, A Hold Harmless Agreement for Private Firearms Range. We have our new police chief, fresh off his 457 plan that he's been approved for, looking very healthy.
For over 15 years, the Bat Township Police Department's been using a private firearms range located on a farm off of Chandler Road. As time progresses, responsibility for the land changes hands, and this is one of those times, and new power of attorney was created for this property. New power of attorney requested that, one, we continue to train out there with their blessing, and, two, they just- All they ask for is a hold harmless agreement from the township and to make everybody feel good about us using that range for the training.
It is from conversation this afternoon and looking at some of the paperwork, we do need to make a small change from Cable Farms in the first paragraph to the Allen and Elaine Cable Trust. So, with that amendment, as well as in this one, I would defer to legal counsel. Shooting range may be suitable, but there's also a primary agent of the trust, and I don't know if that needs to be amended at the bottom where it says shooting range signature. If you're fine with that, I'm fine with that. I just want you to know that it's an agent of the trust.
I would just insert the word authorize before the signature for the shooting range.
Okay.
That way, it's a- We're recognizing it's not just somebody up the street, it's an authorized individual.
Okay.
And for the board's edification, our office did work with the chief on this, so this is not something that came out of nowhere. We did assist with this, and this is not an uncommon thing to see. I would also add, to the extent that anybody is concerned about the officers, were they to be involved in anything while they were there for work purposes? Of course, workers' compensation continues to apply for any injuries or anything that would happen. Obviously, I don't wish that to happen, but that's really the primary remedy for anybody in that situation, anyway.
And we don't hold any additional liability insurance for the use of the range?
We do not. I don't know that additional would be required, but I can check with our liability insurance, just to-
Couldn't hurt to ask. Things that would cover, like, not our officers.
And what kind of action are we looking for?
To prove it.
Yeah. Approve the hold harmless agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve this hold harmless agreement for the shooting range.
With the edits?
With the edits, yes. Excuse me. I didn't say that, Karen.
Thank you. I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve the hold harmless agreement with the edits. Is there any other discussion? Go ahead, Al.
I have a question. Either, I think it was Saturday night, there was an awful lot of shooting around Park Lake. Does anybody, except my neighbors, hear it?
So, it was on your end, south end?
Yeah. I'm not sure which direction it come from. I usually don't hear the one out in Rose Lake, so- But there must have been, oh, 30, 40 shots.
Now, looking through our calls for the weekend, I have not seen shots fired in complaint from Park Lake Road. There could be many reasons why you've heard all those shots. It is legal for one to shoot on their own property-
Right.
-with a proper backstop, of course. There's also certain hunting seasons. I'm pretty sure they probably didn't do 40 shots at a turkey. If they did-
They'd try and come back.
Probably could have talked to them, but-
Probably missed them back.
Yeah. I don't know what there's another season that's in that could possibly explain it.
I was just- Usually, if they're shooting at deer or turkeys or something, it's one or two shots, and then it's it. And this was over about a half an hour period, and probably 40, maybe 50 shots.
We're always available to go check out complaints like that, so-
Somebody sighting an rifle, something.
...to have an officer come look, you know, check out the area and make sure-
You start out, and you hear one or two, and you think, well, maybe that's all there is, and then you hear a couple more, and then you hear a couple more, and you think you're going to be done, and-
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Discussion? We need a roll call for this as well?
I think a voice vote would be good. Because it's not money.
That'd be good. I'm sorry.
Remember, he can't hear right now. A voice vote is good.
That is what that felt like. Okay. Voice vote. Great. So, we have a motion in a second to approve the hold harmless with edits tonight. All those in favor signify so by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That motion carries. That brings us to- Thank you, Chief. 14 Large B, Item Small B, Resolution 2025-05, Authorization for Change in Standard Lighting Contract with Consumers Energy. Our planner bailed on us, so-
He vacated.
Our planner has an early morning meeting, and I guaranteed him that I thought I could handle this on his behalf, so that he could go home. So, this is, in fact, as you said, a change in the standard lighting contract with consumers for unmeasured light poles. We currently have one in place for the current layout in light poles, and this is to add that over at the, let's see, southwest corner, southeast corner of-
Southeast corner.
Thank you. Of Webster and Drumheller for the new sidewalk. This will light that area that will pass over the water there at the edge of the road, so provide safety lighting for that new pathway that will be installed. And really, this is kind of a perfunctory thing. It's not complex and just keeps everything organized for consumers and for us.
Is this part of our payment to consumers, or is this part of the district where people pay?
No, this is not. I guess ours, but there's the district- The payment for the district, but these- Because these are unmeasured, there's no usage of them involved, so a standard payment because it's for sidewalks.
Doesn't fall under that street lighting-
Correct.
Blah, blah, blah.
Got it. But we pay for it.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Other questions?
I didn't mean to make that complex.
All right. Does someone want to put that to a motion?
Yeah. I move that we have consumer power put in these four poles and put lighting along Park Lake Road, or Webster Road, from Drumheller to the Somerset entrance.
Is that your fancy way of saying you move approval of the resolution?
From what?
2025-05.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2025-05 to authorize change in standard lighting contract with Consumers Energy. Is there any other discussion, or are there any other questions?
Any idea when they will actually perform that service?
So, we had already received a proposal from them to move ahead with laying the conduit, so I would offer that probably as part of this project that's occurring. The work is occurring now. You'll most likely see that very soon, so-
Is that going to be a boardwalk?
It's very timely. There will be some retaining in the area where the water is, just to make sure that sidewalk structure is safe. But no, it will not be cracked. It will be standard sidewalk, to my knowledge.
It's been a long time since I looked at those plans.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or follow-up? All right. Sounds like a roll call vote to me.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaki?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion carries. That brings us to Item 14, New Business Large B Items for Action, Small C, Al's favorite time of year. Clinton County Road Commission Contracts.
I am handing out to you one additional construction estimate to go along with those contracts that are in your packet. I would ask that you approve this one as well this evening. It is one that didn't come in the set of contracts from Clinton County, but came to me separately, so when the deputy superintendent and the supervisor put the packet together, you did not have this information with you at that time. It is the totality of- I just had a spreadsheet. The totality this year of our planning, we budgeted $762,000, which included some chip sealing, which, as you know, occurs every other year in this area of the county. That amount, along with the Act 51 cost sharing from the Clinton County of $115,000 and some change, totals approximately $877,000 that we have to use on the roads, which is a very healthy number that we continue to invest in our streets. The largest part of that is going to be Webster Road at $499,000 of that total. We've paid for some engineering already, so that knocks the total down about 100, I think it's 22,000 or 23,000. But you're looking at, with the expenditures that you approved previously for chloride in a previous board packet, and then the contracts that are in your packet, you are looking at a total of $839,000 of projects this year. Again, $500,000 of that being Webster Road. So, I have spoken with the Chair of the Road Committee, Mr. Baker, and trustee Rosecrans, and have let them know that we have very, very little wiggle room. One item goes off kilter in a contingency for Webster Road. That could be this $30,000 that's in place. So, we will move very tight step together, along with DPW and Miles Robler, our planner, to make sure that these projects go to the best of our abilities and that we are not dipping into those contingent funds, and hopefully, we will come in under budget. That is our hope. But as you know, in construction, that does not always happen, so we will do our best.
Doesn't usually happen.
Because it is critical that these projects be completed. The one that I handed out for the downtown area includes Clinton, Chestnut Cherry High and Walnut Streets. I think it was very prudent of the Road Committee to wait until the sidewalk projects were complete, to have a completely, basically, a new downtown street system, sidewalk system. And I think we're going to have an area that we can really be proud of in terms of safety and in terms of quality of roads. I know that year after year, we continue to invest a lot into our roads, which our residents appreciate, Clinton County appreciates, and we're doing very well in that. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. I know it's a lot of material to go through, but a lot of the prices came in either under or just at where Clinton County Road Commission indicated they would, so the pricing feels good for, you know, an economy that continues to change pretty quickly, so.
Questions or action by the board?
So if you have any questions, please let me know. I know it's a lot of material to go through, but a lot of the prices came in either under or just at where Clinton County Road Commission indicated they would. So the pricing feels good for, you know, an economy that continues to change pretty quickly, so.
Questions or action by the board?
Action requested is?
Approve the contracts.
To approve the contracts that include those that were in your packet as well as the one that I handed out.
I'll make the motion to approve those contracts as submitted by superintendent.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I did, wow, who got that one?
Everyone wants to be on record of building the roads. Alright, we have a motion in several seconds. Is there any other discussion? Are there any other questions?
Thank you Karen and George and Al, a lot of work.
And John.
And John, yeah, that's true.
About one last roll call vote for good times?
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaikey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes. That motion carries as well. That brings us to the end of our business tonight, and we're at item fifteen with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate meetings like this. Staff works really hard to bring you quality items that we can act on on behalf of our community. There are a lot of good items that took place tonight. The sewer tap-in fees, the bylaws, you know, some of this is obviously things that need to be done for the organizations that we work with. But each item is very important in the operation of our township and how we operate at the sewer authority and with Clinton County Road Commission. So our partnerships are very important. A lot of what we do couldn't be done without these partners, and we really appreciate the work that you do to learn. I know you never thought, probably when you signed up for this, that you'd be learning about sewers and REUs and roads and all the things, lighting and, you know, MERS investments, but they're critical to our operation and staff appreciates you and our partners appreciate you, so thank you. There are a lot of things that are in flux right now in the township, and we're working very hard to make sure that we are serving our residents to the best of our ability. The conversation tonight about Mercy Ambulance is critical. I am very proud to have the Duitt, the new Duitt Township manager, as well as the city manager of Duitt by my side, to go through these difficult issues on behalf of all of our communities and for our residents. These are not easy things to deal with. And so we work together very well to make sure that we are doing the right thing for all the people we represent. As you know, the fire department is in a time of improvement and change. That seems to be going very well. We are moving forward with drafting an emergency operations plan. We discussed that last time a little bit. We are working on taking care of some of the issues with the vehicles. When I spoke to you last, we had a vehicle that had tires that were eighteen years old. We had another vehicle with tires that were twenty-two years old. So we're working to resolve those issues for the safety of our people and our residents as well. At this point, anything that is safety, health and welfare, obviously are very critical issues for the interim chief and I. As well, new chief Matt Martigan is working very hard to make sure that his department is well-staffed for our community. We have some injuries that are going on right now. We have some other things that are happening, and we find ourselves at times stretched pretty thin. People are working a lot of overtime, and so these issues will continue to be brought to you so that you have an awareness of what is occurring. We are not experiencing anything out of the ordinary. Other communities are experiencing these things as well, and I believe that Duitt Township especially has backed us up on calls for fire and police as well, and we continue to do that for them as well. We're all in challenging times. We're all being asked to do more with less. I saw last night on Facebook a comment about using DDA funds to beautify the four corners. We use the DDA money. What is left of the DDA money will be used on the balance of sidewalks this year. So that money has been expended on sidewalks. That will contribute to the safety and the beautification, which I think of our community. Somebody questioned the use of those funds. Those funds are audited each and every year, and that can, that audit can be viewed online. So if there are questions about how the money is being spent, it is being spent and authorized by this board to be spent on sidewalks in the downtown area, which is also something I believe that was important for our community and for our young people that are traveling those sidewalks to school and to other places in our community for recreation. As we continue to move through, a lot of changes will continue to occur with MERS. I am getting ready to hopefully have a staff meeting in which we discuss some of those changes. We have a couple of people that are within retirement age, that's been brought to you before, that will be requesting some items from this board, and we will be bringing those to you. A lot of moving pieces. The union has asked to come back together with a legal counsel and myself to continue negotiations now that some of the reports that they have asked for are here. And then, before you know it, you'll blink it up, we'll be budget season yet again. So it's a never-ending grind. I ask that if you feel like you don't know what's going on, please, please let us know where we can fill in gaps in information. Sometimes the doing takes precedent over the communicating, and I don't want any of you to feel like you don't know what's going on right now. So please just ask if you feel like you would like to know, if you'd like to know more. I, though busy, I, my door is always open, and I appreciate the phone calls, the text messages, or the come-in-and-sit downs to have the opportunity to work with any of you on what you feel you're lacking in information or communication out to the public, and we will do that. You will see some postings. We currently have a posting for a DPW worker. We've got some really quality applicants for that position. Police officers, fire, obviously, fighters will always continue to be open, and then we will have the fire chief position, I think, in the next week. That was something we discussed today. So, and as well, the supervisor and I have met with the planner to discuss the comprehensive plan and how that fits with our strategic planning and how we engage the community in those two plans to get feedback from our residents. So, and if that wasn't enough, there's an election. I won't rain on your parade with that one, but as always, there's always another thing. So please just let me know how I can assist you in getting the information you need for the people you represent.
Have we scheduled the MERS training for board members who wanted that?
I think that Ms. Mills and I will discuss that very soon so that you all have the information you need to make informed decisions on the planned changes that will be before you.
Okay. Other questions for the superintendent?
Oh, do you know if they're going to be getting started on that gas station anytime soon?
Bath, might that be something you might know about? If you could step to the podium, we'd appreciate it. In lieu of the planner, Bath is pretty in the know in the back office, so.
We just, we actually were just discussing this a little bit ago. They're going to be coming forward. They have out for bids for the contract work and the earthwork, so it's moving forward. We did contact them when we knew that the road closure was going to be taking place. Miles did, I won't say we, I think we just directed him to, so he did. They were going to be, it was going to be, like, the timing was going to be about the same. So I think that there was a few week delay probably in where they're at with going to be starting, so they're going to be starting like right after that road work is going to be taking place, so that stuff wasn't coming in at the same time as we were going to have road closure for the on-off ramp situation. But it's still moving forward. It hasn't stalled or anything yet, so we should be seeing this fall the movement taking place. So if they can get the infrastructure stuff in then, they'll, we'll be seeing, you know, the building going up over the fall into the winter, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
I would also offer that despite economic conditions, we are seeing, people are reaching out to discuss projects with us, which is also very exciting, both housing projects and commercial projects. So we do hope that continues. Some of it may never come to fruition, but some of it is, you know, people testing waters to see what might be a good fit in our community with the land that is available. So those continue to take up both the planner's time and the assessor's time in meeting with them, in addition to the regular projects that we're, you know, plan reviewing at this time, like the I townhomes. So there's a lot of movement right now, and it's really exciting, despite, you know, my thinking that maybe these types of things would slow down a little bit. People are really kind of raring to go and kind of ready to build things, so it's an exciting time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item sixteen in the agenda, which is Public Statement Two. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on any topic whatsoever for three minutes?
Of course, it'll still be roads. Thank you for approving that. I'm greatly appreciative of the forward-thinking and being proactive and not reactive. You don't have to go very far outside our community to find bigger paths than we have, so thank you for that.
Thanks, George.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Alright, if there's no one else from the audience, we'll move on to item seventeen, Board Member Comments. Kate, you want to get us started today?
Sure. I just, am I on the timer?
No. I turned it off.
It did sound like that.
I can talk fast if you want. I just wanted to reiterate my comments from last time, that I really, really pleased with the sidewalks. I feel like the, I think it's Reeve Riley that did that, they just, I think, look great. They just look so professional and everything looks so nice and tidy. I'm really excited, and I'm excited to see the second phase of it finished up here on Webster Road. I think it's just going to be a huge benefit to our community, and I want to thank everybody who had a hand in making that happen. And I wanted to say that I wanted to echo Sherri's comments earlier about the senior center review of attendance and fees. I think that on the planning commission, that was one thing that was lacking data-wise, was who's coming and where are they coming from and how often are they coming? And that was honestly probably the most needed data, and of course, they did the best they could with what they had. But I think that going forward, it would be helpful for future debate if we had that kind of information, if we're tasked with making some decisions in that same vein going forward. And I do think it is something to be aware of, that we are subsidizing a lot of people, it appears, from outside of our community. So if we had that more reliable data, then I think we could maybe move forward appropriately with that. So I just wanted to say that I second that.
Thank you.
Recommendation for procedures with the senior center going forward. I don't know how that gets carried out, but I do think it's something that comes up quite a bit. I think that's it.
Al?
Thank you. We have a vacancy on our road committee, and I'd like to have John Wright put on there next meeting. If you can recommend it.
Yeah, do we have a application for him?
According to him, we did.
Oh, did he leave?
Yeah, he just walked out.
He just walked out. I will have the deputy superintendent check that because I don't monitor those to see if we have one from him and if we.
Well, you talked to him, he had one in, but I'll make sure he gets one in, because I'd like to, he's.
It's possible to, and I just want to make sure it is.
He is very well-known in, with the county and everything we do down here, so.
He's big in the roads community, you're saying?
He likes to travel.
On the road.
And also on the, you know, we put money in roads, and we don't ask anybody if they're Bath Township or if they're not Bath Township. We put a lot of money in our parks. We don't ask anybody if they're Bath Township or if they're outsiders. Why do we ask our seniors? Most of them need a meal and the camaraderie, and I think we should be a little more careful on what we bring up to check on in the township.
Think so.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Brenda?
Just an update. We have a Langsford School election tomorrow. We have about sixty residents in Bath Township who vote in Langsford Schools. We are transferring all, they're all in precinct three, and they will vote at Victor Township.
Great, thank you. I might be stepping on your toes, so kick me if I am, but we have a finance committee this week, right? Where we'll talk more about some of this MERS stuff. The clerk and I attended a Meridian Township hosted municipalities, nearby municipalities meeting, I guess we could call it. I think you all were invited to that. Unfortunately, I had to leave early due to a work emergency, but what I was there for was interesting. Lots of road stuff, lots of pathways and trail stuff, just like an incredible amount of trail stuff is going on just right to the south and east of us. So I imagine we'll see some of that come to fruition. We talked about other things that are happening in the region. There were school boards there, CADA was there, township, city. It was really nice to have the different types together. It was a nice meeting that they hosted. Did I miss anything that would be key for folks to know?
They actually said if we needed any help, just to reach out to them, and they would help guide us where we would like to go or, you know, give us information.
Yeah, it was a nice.
On different projects.
Nice time. I also have been getting lots of comments on the sidewalks. People I didn't even know live in Bath have sort of come out of the woodwork to talk about how excited they are and how good they look, so lots of kudos to the folks who've been working hard there. And lastly, I ran into our state representative Penelope Sernigulu on Friday night, and she pulled me aside and she said, "You guys had a great meeting. I really liked being there, really liked sharing what's happening in Lansing, and I'm happy to come back again." And I thought that was a kind thing for our state rep to say about our meetings and what we were doing. So I would like to get Senator Singh out here next, since he's not been to one of these meetings. He can talk about what's happening in the Senate, but I think we can invite those folks, you know, every so often when we want to know what's happening down in Lansing on our behalf.
Definitely.
I just want to say I went to the MMTA training conference last week. It's a three-year program. I mean, that was second year for me, so next year will be my last. I'll graduate from basic institute, and then you'll go on to master. But I do think everybody here should make sure they're taking any training they possibly can. It was, I was there from Sunday to Friday. It was a long week, but it was so informational, lovely speakers. Just find training and go. You never know what you'll learn.
How do we coordinate that with the staff? Who's the go-to person?
Well, mine is through, mine was Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association. So you probably have a login to MTA.
Does she have a login to MTA?
She should. Usually Brenda update, the clerk updates those at the change of elections.
So Michigan Township Association, you should have a login.
I mean, I get stuff from them, but I suppose I've never.
You can get online and look at.
So generally, if you find something that you would like to attend, Samantha is the assistant to both the deputy superintendent and I, and would be happy to facilitate that for you and use township payment for that, and that doesn't need to come out of your pocket or, so you're reimbursed. But it's, we budget for those trainings, so she'd be happy to make those accommodations for you. You just need to reach out, even reach out to Taylor and let her know, and then we'll hand it off to Samantha, and she can make the arrangements for both the class and the lodging if lodging is needed as well. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that for you.
The training at American Planning Association is good, too. I went to a couple of those.
I'd encourage folks to make sure that the training is about charter townships. In my first term, I spent a very long day learning about general law township budgeting. That was not at all like what we do.
Not during into us.
Not the best use of my time, so that's worth seeking out to make sure it's the right stuff.
Well, and the other company, the other place you can get training that's usually free through webinars is through the MSU extension.
MSU Extension, yeah.
I do a lot of those. Sitting in my office, they'll just be playing in the background when I'm doing other stuff. There's a lot of information on those.
Yeah, webinars, you can, they have, they've zoomed them, you know, and you can go in and get the archived ones.
I would also recommend that a lot of the consultants that work with the township offer free education on a very regular basis, multiple times a month. So by way of example, our firm issues a township e-letter, and I think this month was really entertaining. I got a giggle reading it, I didn't see an initial draft of it, but it was great. Back to the, Back to the Future movie was involved in discussions about decisions that you're making. It's great. So that happens on a regular basis from the e-letter that then gets translated to a webinar at our office. We do all of that for free for our clients. But I'm aware, for instance, like Maynard Custerison puts on regular webinars. So there are a lot of resources out there. It probably would take a concerted effort to decide what you're looking for, but I, in addition to the MTA, I would suggest there are lots of resources, and if there's a topic of particular interest, you should maybe put that bug in my ear or David's, because then maybe we can get one of our team to write on it and then do a webinar on it at no cost to anybody.
Alright. Thank you.
I've also done a training with MML, the Michigan Municipal League, which is more geared towards cities, but because we're a charter township, some of that does cross over, and that I found to be really high-quality, too.
Thank you, Jen, for poking that conversation.
Okay.
Right? First, I'll say the police, I appreciate very much seeing that it's just seems to be more exposure, if you will, on Park Lake Road around the lake. They, especially in front of my house, if you know where Mike Creed lives, I live directly across from him, and they come up that hill going south from where the store used to be, and they just step on it right there. So fast that they literally have to step on their brakes when they're going around the corner at Culver Drive, so I do appreciate you having, it just seems like you have a more pronounced presence there than regular, and I'd like to see that even more. And he actually, I watched him stop somebody, the guy in the pickup, so.
I didn't know he lived here, but that is intentional.
You did? No, I lived there. I was going to say, he was sitting in Mike's driveway right across looking at me, so I had to go over and talk to him, but I appreciate that. And thank you. had to go over and talk to him. But I appreciate that. And thank you. The senior center, I, that kind of meshes with what Al said about parks. I disagree strongly with him that we have not spent anything on parks in the last twenty years other than DPW work. And the senior center, we have, we can, you know, parks, we have to maintain them, and they are open to the public. We don't charge for any of those. However, we do have something to say about the senior center and what we charge for meals and things of that nature. So I think it's our responsibility to get more data so that we know who we're feeding and why, and if we can possibly get some more funds from those municipalities that those people are coming from that don't have a senior center, that we can maybe shame them into giving us some money. It won't happen, but I'd like to see it anyway. So, and that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Ray. Chair, you want to bring it home?
Agree with that. And with Kate, thank you. And if we do recognize we have fifty percent of people coming, maybe we can go after some money from them to serve more seniors. That's my object here, is to, objective, is to serve more, give more, more room. And if we expand it, that's going to be bucks. We're going to need it. And other communities, we're, they should help us serve more people. Believe me, that's what I'm about, wholeheartedly.
I've been there for twenty years, and let me tell you, it don't work that way.
Well, we can try. It doesn't hurt to try.
Yeah, you can try.
And if we know the numbers, that's ammo.
That's how we got our money last time, for the kitchen, is because we did serve outside people. We didn't just keep it to Bath. Or we wouldn't have got the money.
Yeah, and I agree with serving anybody.
I don't know if you know, I worked at Motor Wheel for quite some time in my, in my formative years, and I was in a management meeting once, and I offered, I was a, I was an analyst, and I offered a way for the company to save a quarter of a million dollars a year by changing, a minor change on a production practice, if you will. And the superintendent that was running the meeting stood up, and he said, "Damn it." He said, "We've done it this way for thirty years, and we're not going to change now just because some young whippersnapper comes in and tells us how to do it." I said, "Okay, you can lay bricks for thirty years, but it doesn't make you a good bricklayer." So that's, you know, I think things need to change, metamorphosize, if you will, for the better. And one thing I forgot to say when I was proddling is that I do appreciate the détente that has sprung up between staff and this board, where we have, I think, have eased tensions considerably and tried to communicate a lot more. I think that's very, very important, and especially to give thanks where thanks are due, because they certainly do get the digs and the negatives, you know, more than their share. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from you, Cher?
No.
Thank you.
That brings us to adjournment. Does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I move re-adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Ray, I think that it's one of the erasings, if you find me a house, or if Brian finds me a
Okay, there's right at the boat launch. Have you seen that one?
Yes.
Okay, that's a private individual, so you have to call them. It's a two-four-eight